Good evening, this is the council meeting from Goulart Town Council all chambers and we have everybody tonight around extended table, so we're doing our social distancing. And this is our second meeting with you two, we hope everybody's able to hear us plainly. I'm going to call meeting to order and do the roundtable introductions. On my left is town clerk Joanne Perry, town manager Sandy Collins, councillor Jess Paul, councillor Gerald Perry, councillor Chantel Lynch, councillor Richard Kelly, councillor Craig Arnold, deputy mayor David Saunders, and myself, Mayor Doug Churchill. We'll start our evening's work with the minutes from the first or last regular council meeting, which was on YouTube on May 12th at 7:30. We need a motion to adopt please. Richard Kelly, second.
I move for Doug.
Second, Craig Arnold. All in favor? Everybody? Is there anything arising from those minutes? Number 21?
Number 21. Yep, the speed bump on Englet Road was installed a couple of days ago, so that's there, we're waiting. We have temporary speed bump signs up now and just waiting for the permanent ones to be printed, but the speed bump is installed.
Thank you. Anything else arising? Okay, hearing none, we move to the next council meeting, which was held in the fire hall on May 15th at 11:00 AM. Need a motion to adopt please. I move, second, Craig Arnold, second, David Saunders. All in favor? Everybody? Please say we're seconding it or just saying it and, okay. Yeah, anything arising from those minutes? Alright, hearing none, we move to the public works meeting of May 20th at 1:00 PM. Again, we need a motion to adopt the minutes. Richard, Richard Kelly, second, Gerald Perry. All in favor? Everybody? And there are three items, three recommendations that we need to do, we'll do them individually as motions. The first one deal with permit for Cecily Parsons and Alex Gill. Do you want to speak to that?
That recommendation, we want to renew that recommendation, I'm going to make a new recommendation and a motion, a move that she be given permission to use the driveway and she would have to put a service line from the road up to her house and we will have a look at our policy regarding driveway, private driveway.
Okay, so we have a second there as well, okay. Jess Paul, second. Any discussion? Everybody understand the motion, so everybody's okay with the motion?
I'm not, yeah.
Okay, alright. Have a question in particular.
Well, we're, we're, we're not changing it, are we?
We're changing what recommendation was there, changing the recommendations.
I made a motion, not a recommendation, I made a motion that she be given permission to use the driveway, after permit and she had to put a service line from, not use the service line is there, she had to put her own service line directly from road up to, to the, her house and her responsibility comes first at all. And that's we're gonna have a look at our policy regarding driveway, private driveway.
So, so we're not accepting the recommendation that was made?
No.
And Richard, as, as chair of the public works committee, of course, is, is making that motion, so is that, clarify or is it?
I'm, 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 I'm opposed, please.
Okay, but, but you understand what we're doing?
Yeah, I understand.
Any other questions or comments? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so Gerald Perry is called for the motion. The motion is passed. The second item there is in regard to a letter, re-owned hardware on a complaint. And the recommendation from the committee, public works committee is a letter be written to Home Hardware acknowledging the complaint. While council recognize the current cleanup effort, they expect the level of tiredness to continue once completed, the town manager will follow up at a later date to ensure compliance.
If there's a discussion, I'll interact with me.
Okay, we need a motion to accept that recommendation first. I move, Perry. Let's move that motion, do we need, we have a second. Richard, a second, a motion, is there any discussion? Yes, okay, before you discuss, Chantel is going to leave as a matter of conflict, so she leave us for a moment, carry on.
I drove by here days ago and all put the fence now along the side of the road here that goes out to leading up to, you know, the departments there. At the end of that, his fencing there, if he turned right angles and put a say eight-foot fence right across that road there, that would arrest all the stuff that's, you know, being blow down there, that should solve the problem, might be. And I also mentioned Paul myself, it's not my job, Mr. Paul, I saw, yes, I would say, Paul, when you put a fence across here now.
Save it by a lot of grease from complaints and everything else because if he, your road that I just heard doesn't think so, if he went right across like it's here.
The town manager, I think he's had some contact.
Yeah, so I was down and spoke to Mr. Warren about the original fence permit and he actually, he questioned that as well, but of course acknowledged the fact that this is still in the public right of way, so it would have to be done with the council approval, but I agree with you, it would, it would essentially fence all of that in.
Well, even if it was a temporary thing because.
He suggested that.
Understanding was that this private driveway, if you made a temporary thing, I mean, the cost won't be horrendous to, to, you know, go across there and it would arrest all that stuff that's rolling down there, that's correct, you're wrong.
A breakaway, yeah.
Yeah, but we should really give permission to put the.
Well, the fence across there, still on that, from, from where we got the end of the pavement. It's all enough to land, you would be walking.
Now, there's so much, Sandy Collins here, there's so much of that beyond where the pavement is, that the adjacent business, TBL would use as well, so it would probably be a portion farther back, but as I understand, I was there, I think there was a discussion at one point about purchasing that land or trading off or something, so.
Yeah, we had discussions on that.
There'd probably be appetite on his behalf, hence before, but I know we've had those conversations and the discussion I have.
We don't care about charity, so we don't care about charity, but put a fence up there and say, "Play."
Yeah, but see, nobody's gonna go anywhere beyond the Home Hardware.
No, no.
So, even a fence across there, even like I said, a temporary one, even.
Okay, let's, let's let the town manager follow up with that, just see where that, where that could go and, and have a discussion around both fence and the, and the property and.
And charity, I think.
And, and the fact that there's other people using it as well.
Yeah, but this is beyond.
Is that a consensus then, that we would, we would do, that the, the town manager would do the follow-up on this one before we made decision on allowing the fence to cross?
Yes, yes.
Just come, come back to us first.
Yes, of course.
Alright, thank you, so we'll allow Chantel to come back, so that's consensus for that recommendation, yeah, okay. So, Chantel has rejoined us. We did have the public work priorities for 2020 and a quite a long list of these, so we need a motion to accept that priority list. Richard has moved, made a motion, David, deputy mayor, has seconded. Any discussion?
This is. Well, I haven't talked into that, anybody, over there, does anybody else need to do this, can you tell us or get something that's in their mind, that they're not there, needs to be done, who else to do this?
So, they will call down to the public works committee?
Yes.
Alright, ready for the question, all in favor then? Everybody?
Thank you. I just, Sandy Collins here, just had something to add, in that meeting, it was asked by public works committee that I go and look into the town purchasing a paint machine to do our road painting, our side block painting and whatnot, so I reached out to Gander because that's the one we always seem to come back to, is Gander's had this machine and had, had some success with, I spoke to a gentleman in there at the town, he told me that that machine was purchased, I'm not exactly sure on the exact years, but let's say eight years ago, when they purchased the machine, they had paint as well, special paint that came out of Ontario from the manufacturer, they purchased that machine used, I believe, anyways, they applied the paint, the paint lasted for seven years using that machine, however, there were some HR issues with staff using the machine and it kinda got mothballed and the machine's been sitting upstairs, I say upstairs, but in a warehouse upstairs somewhere for the last seven years, has not been used a second time, even though the results were so good, but because of the HR issues. Last year, I believe it was, they went out to get prices, they got a price from a local individual, I think, who done some work in our town before, as well as a painter, contractor from St. John's, who was low bid, who came out and did the painting for the town. So, while they had the machine, it's still there, can still be used, they never touched it again because of the hassle created, so I just wanna let you, let you know that, pardon me?
So?
I don't think there's any interest in it, he's hoping at some point, the individual I was speaking to, that maybe they might be able to use the again, but because of the trouble they had last time, they just went out to public tender and they got, they got price, two prices, and the individual from St. John's came out, did the job and they were quite satisfied with it.
Jess, what, just how's the machine was?
He wasn't sure, he wasn't able to find that.
Can we find that?
He's gonna do some machine repair, you know?
Yes, it is, yeah.
We should, I mean, if they're all, if they're all, what is done now?
I don't, oh, sorry.
Councillor Perry trying to get.
Oh, I mean, if, if, if Gander didn't use the machine because of the major, well, why didn't they?
There were some OHNS concerns, I don't know how much I can go into it, I don't have all the details, but there was some.
No, I, I know, I, I wasn't expecting there to be some detail, but the thing that, if they had a problem, they, they, if they have a problem, we want to handle it.
They had the machine and had chose not to use it second.
Not use it, not get that.
Alright, so I guess the bottom line is you continue to follow up in terms of getting something to do our painting or?
Yeah, well, I had, I was hand looking at some prices for machines, that was before I had the discussion with Gander, so, you know, you're looking at anywhere, I'm, I'm guessing again from what we've seen thus far, probably five to $7,000 for the make, painting machine, then of course you have to get the paint, which is like an epoxy paint, is, is quite expensive, so that's, that's what you're dealing with, however, if you want me to continue going down the road, I will, or we can go out as Gander did last year or recently and, and get prices on a contractor.
They were, they were, yeah.
Now, of course, the paint they're gonna use, and I guess a lot of the paints that were, they had some success with in recent years, environment has, take, because of chemicals and those types of things, so a lot of the paints you're getting now, now are watered down versions, so you're not gonna get the longevity up, especially when you're applying salt to our roads and traffic going over it, whatnot, you're not gonna get six or seven years of it, but you may get a year or two or whatever, right? Yeah.
Well, we only wanted to put down the road and poison the machine, but I also put down the road and, and probably from this contract that they had, but they wouldn't do ours though.
I think we should ask the town manager to find a solution for us. Because we're gonna be paying somebody, I don't know, $400 a year and the machine's only $7,000, a couple of years. We do, you have to wait, you have to wait, yeah, of course. Okay, so if consensus ended, town manager will continue to find a solution for our painting. Okay, we're down then to the further business, and the first item is municipal plan amendment for rural. Rural resource. A clayco, and I, I don't think there's anything, anything new on that, it's a business.
No, it's, it's our top banner, and he's continuing his work, functional measures, and everything's going as planned, of course, it has to go through the process, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm reminded that it's river side from east. Thank you. QP and MOU, nothing, nothing updated on the MOU from?
No, we're still waiting to hear back, we did reach out and there's not so much progress, shall I say, but we're, so we're waiting to hear back again, I think some calls are gonna be made, and hopefully we'll have some news soon.
And then the next one, C, is a letter from Yonkers, really naming of the arena, we said we leave that up in the fall and see what happens in terms of other types of things. The next one is D, the application from Cecily Parsons and Alex Gill, which you've now dealt with, and the final one is the application from Gordon's Farm, and I think that was sent out for advertising?
It was, yeah, I came back and there was no feedback whatsoever.
So, where does that leave us now then? Reproved the application, well, let's see now. The, the request was for a permit for a building, right? Because everybody doesn't have a copy yet of the.
So, just remind every one of us.
Yes, okay.
To build a building, have a warehouse, a small building, and a creamery would be located there, it would be the only creamery in the province, and it would be, it would be utilizing the milk that we already have, the milk supply here, so it wouldn't be any, any cow milking going out up there to supply, it would be coming out of local farms that have already producing milk, generally the yogurt flow would, would go inside the province, be used for, for byproducts, and anyways, this would then utilize this and create milk, yogurt, those types of things.
And farmer's market, wasn't it?
And a farmer's market.
That was in the first application, yeah.
So, again, we need a, I guess if we're going to accept a permit or approve the permit, we need a motion, oh, okay, so we've got two, we've got Jess has made a motion, so Chantel will second that motion, and again, the, the motion is going to be to accept the permit with the understanding, of course, that this is subject to government services, right, and all government departments, that's necessary to control what goes in the apartment building and all of that, but that will be part of your motion, I guess. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you ready for the question? All in favor? Everybody? Let's see, everybody? That takes us down then to permits and crown land applications. The first one is an application from Dennis and Pam Thornhill for a new dwelling, an addition of a dwelling on their property, and the chair of the permit committee, Craig Arnold, is going to give us the permit committee's recommendation, and a recommendation and a motion that we would approve that application. Okay, so it's a recommendation that we would approve that, and a motion that we would approve that request, that permit, we have a second there. Deputy mayor has seconded that one. Any further discussion? I mean, from anybody? Okay, all in favor then? Everybody? You? The next one is an application from Tower Requesting to operate a cafe at their site, and again, the recommendations from the permit committee, the recommendation and a motion is to not approve the application, the cafe is a non-conforming use in rural resource zone. That rural resource zone, it's a non-conforming use zone, we turned out the application, so you're making that a motion?
I am.
We have a second there. Gerald Perry has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Paul?
We approved, or they had a barn dance up there at one point last fall? You approved that, what's the, what's the difference in that, in a cafe, whatever?
Well, this is, like you just said, this is a, a non, this is, this is not permitted in this particular. Okay, by this, there's a question, a barn dance, would be a different matter, I'm not sure.
It's a different barn. The barn is.
So, any other discussion then? You ready for the question?
Is there any? Can she come back and ask for an actual zone change or an area of her place that has a cafe?
I guess that's, that's probably a discussion she could have.
It's an option she has.
She could have it, town manager, for sure.
Because, I mean.
But it would be, it would be a change that would be at her expense, right?
Yeah.
At her expense at that point in time. Okay, so, ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Chantel is opposed to the motion. The next item is an application from Terranova, Terra Vista Limited, sorry, for an after-space constructed, and the permit committee's recommendation, motion to accept the application subject to Service and Out approval. Okay, so that's a motion that's made, and that's at the building that's on the side bank basically, 70 to 74, Goulart, North. We have a second there? Okay, Jess Paul has seconded that motion, any discussion? So, they're going, they're not constructing a space, they're taking over a space that already exists there.
I didn't think that you had to come to council for interior renovation.
You know what I mean?
Because when, when the Home Hardware is renovating now, it came up last meeting that it didn't need a, didn't need a application for interior renovations, and that's what they're doing down there, is interior renovations.
No, I think this, I think what they're doing down there is they're starting.
And I think there's a little bit of discussion.
No, 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 it's got nothing to do with that, oh, oh, my word, but this, this case, it's a business going in there, it's a new business going in to operate at a building that is dormant, so that's, that's the question, right? It's got nothing to do with the renovations, if they don't renovate, it doesn't have to us, town manager.
I was speaking to Barry Porter of Service and Out, he doesn't see any issue with it, he'll probably be able to grant an exemption, but it's just back with his building that's the mayor had said has been shut down for so long, they just wanna make sure they're not going in there and changing the use of what it was originally used for.
They meant that July, or it's.
Yeah, so I, I don't foresee there to be, I can't say for sure, of course, that's culture proper channels, but from speaking to Service and Out, I don't see it as being an issue.
Okay, so we've got the recommendation and we have a second there? Ready for question? All in favor? Next one is an application from Charlie Marilyn Pickett for a warehouse at their site in Tifford Line and.
EBL.
EBL, and the recommendation is?
Recommendation and a motion is to approve subject to advertising. Advertising, and a warehouse is discretionary use in a light conductive zone, which is what that is.
Okay, so it is accepted use and it's a recommend, a motion may have seconded now from councillor, deputy mayor, Saunders. Any discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? The application from Corey Collins for wheelchair ride? I move. Let's wait for the recommendation from the permit committee. Councillor Arnold, please.
I may a motion to approve the application, please.
Okay, and the secondary, I guess, would be Jess Paul. Are you ready for the question, any further discussion? It's, it's, it is a little close to the road, we saw there, but, but it's, it's within, within our guidelines. No further discussion, are you ready for the question? All in favor? Okay, we're down to report, the town manager.
Okay, as most of you have probably already seen, our spring cleanup, it's a little bit late this year, is scheduled to begin June 16th, Tuesday, and run along that week, I was thinking with everything, I don't know if you noticed, the folks at the town had up with Mr. Phil Riggs to clean up an area of town, we had considerable feedback from residents saying there's quite a bit of mess and ditches and whatnot, and they could really use to clean up, so what I'm proposing is we do some sort of community cleanup, asking families to go out, just something to get community involvement, maybe over the Saturday and Sunday prior to cleanup week, which would be the 12th and 13th of June, to go out, you know, take your kids, spend a couple hours cleaning up in front of your property or in that general area, obviously maintaining distance from other families as you would, and maybe the town could do a little contest where we ask them to take pictures and we would, we'd give a gift card to the person saying that was drawn out of the hat, but just something to get some community involvement, and obviously, from everything we've heard, but we ourselves have seen, there's obviously a need for cleanup around town, so it might be a little bit of a fun way to, to do it, get community involved.
So, I guess we need motion to, are we gonna spend some money on that?
Well, we would provide any necessary items they would need, garbage bags and whatnot, and then as a prize, I would suggest a $100 gift card from a local business of the winner's choice.
You wanna make that motion? Okay, and any second there, Gerald, Gerald Perry seconded? Any discussion? All in favor? Everybody, okay, perfect, carry on.
Okay, and just as that, the dog park is opening on Monday, so as the next level changes, we put in some steps and we've had signs printed, so there's some new regulations to be followed up there, but anyways, we feel comfortable enough that we can allow the dog park to be open, as many other municipalities are planning to do as well, so that's just a heads up. And finally, just wanted to keep you updated, I've been speaking to some councillors, one-off conversations, talking about the amount of permits that have been requested, just looking at the books today, we've had 25 permits for various things, from fences and patios and extensions and sheds and whatnot, 25 permits issued since April 1st, so it's, it's quite a busy time, so, good new government program coming online, probably gonna have even more, so that's, that's a bit of good news.
Good stuff, yeah. Okay then, we're down to the mayor and council, I don't have anything, and we gotta get together earlier, is there anything that needs to come up then? Hearing none, we move up.
I think, I think the council should crack a very strong letter to the Department of Highways, regarding the street to roll down, we're, we're probably, you know, spending, you know, all sorts of money down the road now, getting our baby dog, our streets that needs to be done, and we had a road dislodge in the town, same road, that's really atrocious in the streets, you know, with the amount of traffic that we had in this town, and anybody from Mexico on that, wanna make that road, we need something done with that road, and I don't, I don't need to hear, I don't know, maybe they are, have you heard any from them?
Yeah, so last year I had a conversation with Dave Barney Burke, he's got regional manager in Eastport, and actually I called him after the fact and thanked him for the amount of paving coming us, getting into the true central part of town that was done, which was very, very much appreciated, and made note of fact, like the intersection in particular around the Irving and that part of town, there's real bad areas as well as over by Baywatch and throughout town, he said every year, of course, it's a priority, all of these communities have priorities, but they get knocked off as funding gets shipped away, so he was able to get some funding for us last year, he's hopeful he'll be able to get us some more, but of course, it's, the need is so great and the funding available is so little, I think he said it's his annual budget, don't quote me out, but I think he said it's $80,000 a year, which is peanuts when it comes to asphalt, so the majority of his budget, I would assume, probably went to Goulart Town last year, so hopefully we can continue to chip away at that.
Maybe we need a meeting with the minister.
Do you want to follow the letter first to highways and?
I think, I think, I think we should make our feelings known here, we're just satisfied, satisfied of the vote, and that we, you know.
Need a motion for that? Okay, so, yes, Gerald has made a motion and seconded by Richard Kelly, that we would write to Department of Highways and encourage them at least to, to patch or to do something to improve the, the highway through, through town.
Yes, the other thing is, just before COVID hit and everything went sideways, we were in the process of setting up a meeting with Minister Crocker through our MHA to discuss the realignment of the intersection, that may be part and parcel of why that hasn't been done, because if they're gonna be doing some sort of refurbishment to that whole area, they probably wouldn't have laid out a new asphalt, so maybe if we did have a meeting with the minister, we, those two issues are highly intertwined, right?
Yeah, we should probably follow up for that as well. Any further discussion before we have the question on the letter? Ready for the question? All in favor? Hey, everybody, so we write the letter and ask for some, at least some patching or something to approve what's there, anything else?
Yes, I know, did you bring up last year, remember about, about the water check, see how much water we used, we just, they were going to do a study, bring it back to council.
Yeah.
Did you get any information on that?
Yeah, so since that time, I direct Public Works to do so, so they keep records, so at any point for next meeting, I can bring back what they had and report back to council.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, so, I'll carry on. I'm gonna ask, we showed the renovation, renovations, yeah, chamber renovations.
Yeah, I got the final plans from Steve Bagcock last week, I guess that would have been early, yeah, late last week, and I've been in contact with Barry Porter and Service and Out, asking. Um, and I've been in contact with Barry Porter and Service and Out, asking if everything looks good. Steve actually requested I do so, uh, just to make sure everything was, uh, was good and to standard. Uh, Barry came back, said everything looks good. He supplied me with a bunch of documentation that I have to complete with regards to accessibility and exemptions and all those things. So I've been working with Steve Badcock, uh, to get those forms filled out. And once they're filled out, I send them in to Barry. Once that satisfies him, we can go to tender if we so wish.
Okay. Any else? Are you gonna move correspondence? The first item, uh, actually there's two emails, uh, from Berlin and Blasken, and, uh, it's the noise disturbance, uh, adjacent to our property on Jolly View. I think, uh, Town Manager, you have made some contacts there.
Yes, so, um, a letter had been written, um, to address the issue. And there were, there were a couple of issues, um, there with regards to moving a, um, chicken coop and a rooster. That was causing the, uh, that was the nuisance in the area. So anyways, I addressed it with the owner and dropped off the letter. And myself and Mayor actually visited, uh, his property this week, earlier this week, some days ago. And, um, the rooster has been removed and the chicken coop has been moved and the area tidied up. So, uh, the person, or persons who made the complaint are, are happy and satisfied and it seems to be good.
Good stuff. Okay, good, thank you. The next item is a letter from Municipal Affairs and Environment. This is related to, uh, our off-date emergency medical plan, or having an off-date emergency plan. And of course, with COVID, there's not much we can do with COVID-19, but we did have plans originally before COVID started, I believe, to update our emergency plan and we talked about that, of course, that hasn't happened, right?
We were doing this.
We were working on it, yeah, yeah, but we didn't get it finished. And I guess the question that they're asking here is that we continue that, uh, as soon as COVID allows us to get involved, so. That's the gist of that I take it, so you can just follow that for information purposes and continue to look at that. Next item is a lot of good news. Uh, this is the road upgrading and paving, uh, information from Municipal Affairs and Environment. Gives us the idea that we're going to get most of our paving this year. Uh, that we had, uh, planned to do. And I guess the request requires that we have a motion of council to accept the money. Oh, move. Okay, move by. Uh, yes, seconded by David. Uh, any discussion? Yes, uh, I, I make note, Joe, Town Manager, pointing out to me that we ask that no media release or social media announcements be made until advised by the department. And they have not advised us yet to do that, so please, uh, stay off social media in terms of the amount.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, make sure that the, uh, the information there is kept, uh, I guess, for the time being at least, uh, to yourself. So we have a motion. And are any questions, any further comments? I guess we'll wait for the town manager to get through the process in terms of, uh, getting tenders ready and all that kind of stuff and look forward to that.
We have to go through the same process as we did with the, like, road, go to, uh, tender for engineering. We forget to give us the okay to go on.
No, so there was an announcement made yesterday, I believe, Tom Osborne made, uh, with regards to procurement and thresholds. So those have changed. It went from engineering services, I think, went from a hundred thousand dollars now up to two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred.
Same number.
Yeah, a random number, uh, but that may change how we can go about these things and, and whether we have to go to an open call or a closed bid or, uh, even if we can choose the engineer. I had some conversation with, uh, Will Malone, the regional manager in, um, Gander today, and got some answers, but I still need a few more, but, uh, that kinda changes the water on the beans on how we proceed forward. And those, that's put in, into effect for just a short period of time during all of this stuff, I think, just to simplify the process. So it may make it easier.
Is that, is that what the engineers would be?
Yes.
Two hundred and sixty-two?
Yeah, two hundred and sixty-two, yeah.
Two hundred and sixty-two, uh, what the engineer, is that, that the most of the report?
No, no, that's right. So based on, you know, on average, ten percent charge, engineers, you know, thereabouts, so you're looking at, that would be up to, you know, over two million dollar projects. So if this, if we had gotten this announcement earlier, we may have been able to change some direction on the storage tank. But anyways, that's all, that's all in process. As I said, I spoke to Will today. He's hoping by, uh, June 10th, we should have some information. He's gone out to the five chosen consulting firms and hoping to get something back to us relatively quick, so.
So, yeah, good stuff. Okay, so, uh, we get the vote on that one? Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Everybody, oh, no, okay, thank you. The next item then is the information, I guess, only for summer student employment, high school program. This is a twenty-two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents to hire a student for the summer. And this is from, uh, Fine Services with Advanced Education Skills. So just for information purposes, it's a regular summer program that we would use it for.
Well, then we want to have a, a, a student summer program. We, we made that decision.
No, but this could be for the, this could be someone for the visitor information center. There's a lot of programs besides, but that's something that has to be decided. What would be the job description for this summer program? We don't know. We just have a student, so I'm not sure what the program was.
So they just said the job, uh, description, town or?
Town.
Okay.
And the last one there on the correspondence is an email from Albert and Josephine James, really speeding dilvioids. And it was a couple of things that, uh, is requested here. She says that, uh, she's making the request for us to contact the RSCMP to enforce the speed on dilvioids. And, uh, also, she's asking about the gate. She said the sign, of course, is there and the gate says Stone's Night Time, and she's wondering if it is. Uh, it's not, I don't think, although the sign is still there.
Yeah, we, we made the decision in that previous meeting to leave it open and see where it goes. Uh, and I wish I'd seen the RSCMP at that time, that they had suggested they would do further patrols in the evening and whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other question was why do town vehicles regularly use the street when there's an access to the town depot?
That access no longer exists. That was, um, almost somewhat betrayal going behind the town depot. And due to safety concerns, I decided we wouldn't use any more, use it on the road.
So we'll follow up with a letter back then to, uh, Josephine and, and, uh, and her husband, uh, Albert, sorry.
Yeah.
So you'll follow up with that. So any questions on that one? Everybody okay? Moving down then to the next item, there's a check register or a motion, please. Uh, Craig, seconded by Gerald. All in favor? Is everybody? And there are no exemptions. We need a motion to adjourn to Craig and to David. Okay, so thank you very much, folks. That's good to have you.